Good evening, welcome to the May 1st meeting of the Plimpton Selectmen. Happy May Day. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right, so jumping right into the agenda. Apparently, we did not vote the funding source for the capital stabilization articles. We approved the articles, but we needed a separate vote to approve their funding. So we have the Denit Water Filtration System for $130,000. Do we want to do them separately, or just do them all?
Why don't we do them all, and we'll put a hold if we have a question.
The fire vehicle leases for $104,692. Road construction and transfer station. Topcoat for $200,000. Highway Bar Rule for $30,000. Police Station for $500,000. And that's it.
And these are all in line with what Finance Committee is recommending, right?
Yes, these are the numbers they approved. I took it right out of the warrant.
So I would make a motion that we approve those coming from capital stabilization as written.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
These are all in line with our five-year plan.
Yes, no problems. So as I mentioned, Barbara will be doing the motions for the financial articles, and she's going to hand them out at the night of town meeting, so that no one loses them or anything. And she'll probably give Brian a copy prior to town meeting, so he can have it for review. All right.
May I get a copy of that one? Tonight? Just so I can see.
It is actually like the fourth page in the warrant. Fifth page of the warrant, but yes, definitely you can have that.
I just wanted to know which ones that you did right now.
It's the capital, the fire, right-hand call.
Okay, thank you.
To have outside people speaking at town meeting, we just warned Brian, and he seeks permission from the town for them to...
In the introduction, he will say that the following people would be voted, they're not members of the town, so they have to be voted to speak.
Because we'll have two people for the public safety.
Okay, so you'll have to give them their names. And we also say at the end of that, that if somebody comes in that wants to speak that's not a resident, we would then have town meeting make a decision. And we've done that at least once before when Bob Andrews came in, and we voted, they allowed him to speak.
Okay. Okay, so on the warrant articles, I can tell you, give you a heads up on two that I think are going to need amendment from the floor. One is the police station. I think it was all done, but it says for a police station to be located at 5 Palmer Road and shown as parcel 17-2-18. I think we just want to add the wording or adjacent property.
The five acres?
If we infringe on the Highway Department property, or if we infringe on that five acres, the five acres is probably going to become part of this lot. But, you know, if we back up onto the Highway Department with driveway or something, we don't want to be limited by the language that's in here. So it's just adding or adjacent property.
So that'll just be read when the article is read?
Yeah.
Yeah, when the article is, then you make the motion amending the article at that point.
Okay, so you don't read it into it initially, you amend it right off the bat?
Right off the bat.
Gotcha.
And then, so it won't be approved as written, it'll be approved as amended.
As amended, okay.
And then the other one, and I'm not quite sure on this, it was the wording on one of the wage and personnel articles, and I actually didn't have time to... It came from Susan when she was redoing this, and it seemed very confusing to her, and that perhaps we need an amendment. I will find that, and I can either forward it to you, or we can discuss it next week.
Can wage and personnel would make the amendment?
Yes, so we need to talk to them. I don't know if it's, I don't know if that's language that came from Town Council or not.
That's language that came from them, I'm not sure it's vetted through Town Council.
Okay, so I don't know if we need to do that or not, I'm sorry.
Well, Town Council had the whole warrant, though. And didn't, to the best of my knowledge, didn't make any reference to either one of those articles that they put on.
Which article, or what's the gist of it?
I'm sorry, that's, I often remember.
What is jury duty, and jury duty, I'm not sure we go...
Okay, so it's the two wage and personnel?
Yeah, that they submitted for on their committee.
Should be under their name, so.
They're listed in the warrant.
Oh, it's the retiree one. It says to see if the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaw by inserting a new Section 11G or take any other action relative there to. Section 11G retiree, any person who has a retiree from a county or state retirement system that can work a maximum of 960 hours per year and receive compensation must be on an hourly basis and under Chapter 32, Section 191. They must turn in the hours worked on the payroll into the treasury in order to receive their pay.
And what's the question?
And I don't actually remember that part at all. It's just that she had a real question about it.
She being?
Susan Ossow.
Seems straightforward.
I think it was very unclear, so I'll find that.
And that pretty closely follows state laws, what just sort of restates what's coming in the general laws.
Okay, so is there anything else that we need to discuss on the town meeting warrant?
Who did this? Perforated it?
I did. Would you like me to bring my machine in, and you can do your own?
No, well, I think my daughter has that.
Yeah, that's a nice little thing.
Buy any machine.
We're in the 20th century.
Do we need to, I mean, Colleen was here, I assume everyone knows what articles they'll be moving, or do we need to give people a list?
It'd be nice to have a list.
Well, what I did, and I think what I assume Brian did, will do, is we made one list with all the articles, and put who's making the motion and who's the primary speaker. So that, and that was emailed out to everybody who was going to be on that list, so that they know.
So that will be done next week?
Yes.
So Brian will do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good on that, then. Anything else on either of the warrants, or on the annual town report? No?
That should be going to print this week.
Okay.
I liked your cover a lot, that was very cute. Where'd those pictures come from?
My girlfriend, Kim.
Is this going to print? The town warrants?
Yes.
They've gone?
Yeah, last night. To be received this morning. Okay, Christine, you were going to talk about the North County.
Oh, sure. I forgot I put that on there. The Secretary of Beaton had issued a decision in March, I think it was March 17, that allowed for a waiver of Phase 1, but in allowing the waiver, there, it doesn't allow any construction, all it does is allow the Carver Urban Renewal Development Committee and the developer to gather information, do their, the reports, and any action items that come out of the secretary's findings. So there was a lot of good information, I was happy to see that he had mentioned twice in his findings that Montello needed to be reconfigured to prevent traffic going north into Plimpton, but he did not say anything about going south through Montello to get to the park. But he did mention that, and a good part of his findings dealt with traffic issues. They did expand the area for the traffic study, which I thought was really good, too. So I felt like they had a really good understanding of the impact of this project, and they wanted to get a really full picture of how this is going to impact the area with traffic. And they looked at solar and environmental issues, and water runoff, everything. So it was a very well-done document as to all the issues that the developer and the redevelopment authority need to address. They had attached everybody who had submitted a letter via email or hard copy, those are all part of the document as well, so it's a 66-page document. The letter that we provided is in there as well, as the letter from Old Colony Planning Council, and it did say that the developer and the regional planning authority needed to address all of the issues that were brought forth by Mass DOT, the different planning agencies, as well as the abutters. So I thought that was really good.
What's the timeline for this? When do they think they'll be up and running?
There is a long way to go.
Years?
Could be years.
Yeah.
Could be years. There's a lot of work. It's an interesting document, I can email it to you. It's the, I think it's maybe 18 or 19 pages of, that are his actual findings, and the rest of it is letters from, you know, the DOT, planning groups, and abutters. So it's not as enormous of a document as it seems. So I could be happy to send it to you.
Yeah, it's online, yeah, that'd be great.
That's the green one that Bree has in her office?
I, no, that was what they submitted. That's what Carver submitted. These were Secretary Beaton's findings, based on that. Yeah, I definitely will.
Thank you. Okay. John, you wanted communicating with residents, the town's notification email list.
Yeah, I wanted to just, somehow we need to get more, Tara's not here, but somehow go out with the mailing, or however we do it, but try to solicit more emails, so that we can share more of the information that we have. Because if people aren't watching TV or streaming it, they really don't get a good sense of what's going on. And I don't think we're going to be able to attract volunteers until they feel like they have more of a sense of ownership within the town.
So do you want to start with something kind of low-tech, you know, putting signs in our five spots around town, maybe putting a little blurb in the newspaper?
Sure, sure.
Say, please, please give the Selectmen's Administrative Assistant your email address to be kept up to date on.
And if anybody's watching this, I would invite them to get on the town clerk's mailing list, and we'll use Tara as the vehicle for getting out information. I think we have a lot going on that we could talk about, that people might be interested in hearing.
I think that the natural progression is probably going to be, maybe when we get a town administrator, looking at social media, too. It's the fastest way to get information out, and like you said, there's so much happening. And it doesn't have to be big extensive documents, just, hey, you know, this is happening here, check it out, with links, whatever. But that might be something that we need to look at again.
Tara does a good job of what she does, it'd be nice if we can expand it, because she knows how to do it.
So in the meantime, Bree, would you put together just five little signs, and put them in the five places that the warrant has to be posted?
Okay. I don't know if Tara's done that.
Posted the signs already?
No, no, she's posted the warrant. These are signs asking people to share their email address in order to get town dos.
I'll sit with you, too, if you want.
All right. I put dog complaints on here. We've had two issues this week, and did we get any follow-up information from Frank?
No.
All right, so one was Ruby.
I heard about Ruby, that's what I wanted to know about.
Apparently escaped and was harassing the horses across the road, and Frank picked her up, and that's the last I've heard.
What does that mean? Does Frank have her? Does Frank have Ruby now?
Bree, do you have any impression of that? That's what I was led to understand. I don't know if she's still with him, or if she's been broken out, as it were. And then the other one is over on Winnetec? There are a couple dogs on Pope's Farm, kind of harass people when they go by. Again, just making you aware that we've had these two complaints, and they may be moving forward. What do you have there, Bree?
This is the complaint from Franny Walsh.
Okay.
About the two dogs on Pope's.
Did that go to Frank?
Yes. He's got this also. Went to the clerk's office also. That's how I got it. Do you want to read this?
Do you want to begin some action on this? Do you want to?
Yeah, can we ask Frank to investigate and report back officially?
Yes. So let's have a motion to have Frank?
On both. I'd say Ruby and Pope's Farm.
I'll second the motion to have him report back.
I'll say it.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So I'll put that on the agenda for next week, and contact.
I'll CC, I'll CC what might answer Frank, too. Then we respond that way.
And can you, in your request to Frank, if there, if we've had to pay to board Ruby, I'd like to know how much it is. I'd like that to be in his report, if there's been charges to the town.
Or if he... Who do we have the reciprocal agreement with? Is that like though?
I don't remember.
It's not reciprocal?
I think they have to pay, I think that's pass-through expense. I think if he has to put a dog in the pound, then the people who own the dog have to pay. Unless for some reason it's an ownerless dog, and then we would have to pay, but I don't, by the sound of Ruby, it doesn't sound like she's ownerless, so.
Does Dexbury have anything? I've had a Frank's letter, Dexbury.
I'm not sure, but I thought he was using someone else's kennels if he needed to have a dog.
Okay, so.
Ask him.
All that. All righty. Report on the land purchase, I really thought we'd have something. Apparently, the bank is taking its own sweet time giving the partial release on the land, so we're just waiting for them, and then it will be recorded, and I'm hoping it happens before two weeks are up. I wondered if you wanted to start getting the word out about the town administrator's screening committee, so that hopefully this is going to pass at town meeting, and you can just, well, it's already passed, you just have to, the money for the consultant will have to pass.
I just think until we get the salary, money firmed up...
You think there may be a hold at town meeting?
I think there could be, given the number of money articles that are coming forward.
Okay, all right.
And we know probably four of the participants, in a sense, who has to be on there, so then it would be a decision whether we have five or seven.
Okay.
We probably want to list those names and their position, in other words, whether they're a citizen or a member of this committee or that committee, and submit those to Collins when the time comes. And just say, does this look well-rounded enough, or do we need something else? I think, you know, I would let them drive the boat, you're paying them a lot of money to do it, so.
And I guess that brings up the issue of, do we want to talk to any other people besides Collins?
Who else offers this?
Well, I would think we would take, when we did the, when you did the grant, and you found Collins, weren't there four others that were? So I would start there, I would say if they're on the state list, those are the people we want to talk to.
Does the warrant article read, it doesn't say anything about the Collins group, Brian?
Generic. I'd like to, I'd like to talk to some, a couple other, or at least one other group.
You can consider, is anybody in that on the central register? Put them at the central register, asking for, you know, some companies that would do that sort of thing, just explain what's, you know, what we're doing, and looking for someone to, as a professional recruiter, see what happens. I'm sure you will get the biggies anyway, because they watch these things like a hawk, but...
The only reason I suggested doing it the other way is that the more we show the state that we're, you know, trying to abide by the spirit of community compact, and green, and all this, I think the more opportunity we have to win grants. And once this state budget is approved, we'll know whether or not there's money in there for the, for a grant to go, I think it was Southfield, Southbridge? Southbridge, in terms of the fire. Already went to Sean, I can't remember his last name now, the revenue person.
Yeah.
And his response was, if the money's still there, you have a good opportunity to go after it. I'm just thinking, the more we show we're hand in hand.
Is it Cronin?
Cronin, yes. So I'll take a look at the four others. Now, if they don't have that service, then I would agree with Dale, we go out and we put it.
Okay, so you want to reach out to those?
Yeah, I want to reach out to the four first, and just see what they're...
Do we have a copy of that document that has the other people listed that you could contact?
I'm sure we do, somewhere back in the file, yeah. I'm pretty sure I have it somewhere.
Traffic.
Okay, when he was in, it just sounded like we wanted to be prepared, prepared to hit the ground running when...
Though the steering committee is far down the line.
Yes, but it's going to take a while to get people. It took us a few months to get the bylaw together.
Yeah, yeah.
It just may, anyway, that's, that's done. The sign warrants, I assigned Columbia Gas for $797, EverSource for $1,908, US Bank for $453, Protection One for $96.60, Belmont Springs for $10.36, Comcast for $105.78, Verizon for $179.08, KP Law for $4,745, Obashan for $129.99, and Columbia Gas for $573.
You know, I was thinking with the bylaw review, I'd like to get a price from Copeland Page, what it would cost to have them review our bylaws.
Start to finish?
Well, yeah, just, like, maybe just start with the zoning, and go through it, and point out things, because if the sign group would have known that there were issues with our signed bylaw ahead of time, they would have addressed those.
I'm on the same wavelength. I was going to bring up that we need to figure out a way to give the bylaw committee some way to reach out to legal, without us constantly having to be the, but I think that's maybe a better idea, assuming the pricing isn't...
Well, I'd like to know how much it costs, like a set fee for them to review our zoning bylaws, and for them, we can take a look at it, see if that's the way we want to go, and that might just make the most sense.
Sounds good to me.
Do you want me to reach out to Lauren Goldberg?
Yeah, could you see if you could get a cost, what it would be to just start with the zoning, and go from there?
My guess is it would be a lot.
I would think so, but you never know.
I'm guessing $2,500.
I'm guessing $25,000.
Seriously?
Well, have you seen some of this, when you ask them to review X, and you add it up, I mean, just to review the warrant, which is fairly simple, but I mean, they do a lot of work on it, but it's still fairly simple, and it's not that long. You know, add that up, that's probably in the order of a couple of thousand dollars anyway, annually, maybe, maybe a little bit more. So if you take a book, and you give it to them, and you say, we want to, you know, give us the highs and lows here, they'll do it, but, you know...
Doesn't hurt to ask the question.
Yeah, and I just wonder if they would offer some type of package, because I would think other towns have to do that, too.
And if the numbers, tell them if it's going to be a huge number, to come back and give us some suggestions to us on how they might approach it. Maybe we could break it down, or I don't know.
I would probably wait until next year to do it. I mean, it sounds to me like it's going to be a warrant article, like the codification is this year, you know.
Could be.
If you get it codified this year, then it'll be a lot easier to deal with making wholesale changes on it next year. Because you have basically a decimal system in place, so you can add, subtract, you know, delete certain parts of it by vote. But it's probably not a bad, it's not a bad idea, certainly, which should be on the one list.
Of course, I could give a quick overview, saying, well, that one's no good, that one's no good, that one's no good, without doing the whole rewriting bit.
Right, we're not making for an opinion, just what, you know, areas, identify problems that you see in our bylaw, and let us know.
I don't think it would cost us anything to get a cost, so we'll just do that.
If they charge us for that, I think we can have another discussion.
So I had actually asked Dale today if we had heard anything about the PPA.
Are you going to be talking to Town Council about the bylaw?
Yes, I am going to reach out to Lauren Goldberg, and try and get a cost on a review of the bylaws.
Do you need to vote on that?
I'll make a motion.
Just trying to...
Just dot the i's across the t's.
Power purchase agreement. We had agreed with Borrego to...
Power purchase.
To buy the, buy the electricity from or through their free town.
Okay.
Wasn't it Metropoic?
No, I kept thinking Metropoic, too, and Dale thought that...
It was Metropoic originally, but then Metropoic, they...
They turned it on?
They changed, no, they changed, we were on, I mean, but they changed how they were going to do it, so we didn't qualify anymore. It was, at that point, it was, they changed it to a different, it was municipal, they took municipal out and just added in, like, I forget what it was, like, services, basically, or something.
And that was Blue Wave, this is Borrego.
Right.
And Borrego sold it to somebody else, so it's now Marie's Way Solar and Sin Karfa. So anyway, basically, we got checked for $4,370 for, I think it was November through February.
Yes, it's right on the bottom.
Wow.
The fine print. A little tiny...
Yeah, actually, they all say May, so that's all the way back. So it's something, we got, we got $4,370 back on our electric bill.
Good.
So, I can go back to Bree.
That's considerable. Our electric bill isn't, that's a considerable percentage of the whole electric bill. I mean, you know, it's a, I mean, mine is Denit, obviously, Denit uses a lot of power, because that's just the nature of the building, but it still lots of money, it's good.
So we did good?
And I did ask, also asked Dale about the aggregation for all residents, and apparently that's kind of hung up with the state.
Yeah, it's in the, well, it's not really hung up with the state, it's in the normal process for the state, read "hung up with the state," because that's basically what it is. They sent me, again, I sent me an email today, I should forward you on those emails, just so you know what the status is, but it's still in the works, and it's still going, and there's no huge roadblocks. Unfortunately, the company is, they do all the work, we don't have to do anything, they just keep us surprised by what it is that they're doing, like the public hearings in Boston, they attended those, and then there was a, there's a special Q and A that goes with this, and public Q and A that they put out, and they took care of that, and so, I mean, that's where it stands. It'll come to play pretty, pretty quick, I would think, now, because I think they're in the final stages, this is just a final thing, the state is in...
I can't remember when we thought we would be eligible, because didn't they say it was like a six-month process to get all of the approvals from the state, before we'd be able to actually go out and bid on electricity?
At least, at a minimum.
And when did we do that? Was that in October, November?
It was last year, yeah, after the middle of last year, it was in this fiscal year sometime, so.
Yeah, it was, I think it was late fall, so, yeah, so I think we'll be getting to the point where...
Given what they said, we're on schedule.
Good, so that will be a benefit to everyone, basically. Dale, do you have anything on here?
Well, no, not outside, beyond what we talked about, I was going to mention that and a couple of other things. And did you get, John, did you get copies of this Municipal Consultants of New England?
Yes, thank you very much.
And this was, I didn't realize it was back in 2012, but it was in 2012, and...
That was the previous ambulance study?
Yeah, this was in conjunction, we had the ambulance study committee working, that was during the changeover from basic life to support to advanced life support, and we had the, and it was suggested that we go outside to a professional and ask them, you know, what they, what they thought, and they read their report, and it's all here, essentially, it just says that, you know, you can do it the way you want to do it. it just says that, you know, you can do it the way you want to do it, which is the way we're doing it now, but that's going to become increasingly difficult as time goes on, which it has, and you may need to consider staffing it a different way in the future.
Can I have that, a copy of that?
Yeah.
Could you email it to me?
Yeah, did you scan this?
Bree was going to scan it and send it to us.
Did you scan?
No, but I can't.
Would you scan it and send it to the, yeah, because I don't, do you have a copy from?
Do you have a copy?
Yes, I do, I have, I believe, it's the legislature.
Actually, you know what, scan it and send it to me, too, and I'll just give this one to you.
Oh, perfect, awesome, thank you.
I'll wait there, you don't have to wait for it to come in.
Great, awesome.
I did have a couple of people say that they were impressed because they felt he, he tapped into what's actually going on now, so I think it would be...
Yeah, and he was, I mean, and that was, that was just a hey, take a look at this and let us know what you think thing, it wasn't a formal study or anything, and I...
Do you remember what he charged?
Like $1,500, maybe less.
Okay.
And, and I know that the full-blown study that he did for the town of Southbridge, that's the only one, he did a couple, but I mean, I'm familiar with that one, that was a fire department study that he did, and that's a full-time fire department, quite a bit bigger than ours, Southbridge must have 15,000, 18,000 people in it, and I think that they paid somewhere on the order of 12,000 to 13,000 for it. So it would be up there, but it probably wouldn't be that much, because we've got a much smaller operation at this point. But, you know, you have to, and again, I mean, you can go out and find, there are a lot of people that will do this stuff, kind of stuff, but he has a good track record, you can, if you make contact, just ask him for his...
Yeah, we may want to use him in the same manner that he uses.
His references.
Yeah.
And...
Okay.
And that's it for me now.
Okay, correspondence?
I got a couple of things.
Okay.
I'm going to Deanna's graduation tomorrow.
Good.
Oh, nice. Yeah, unfortunately, I couldn't.
Yeah.
Wait, RSVP for you, and Tara will also be attending.
Oh, good, good.
Those two of you. Dennis, I think.
I also got my number on my house lot, you know, that the fire department puts out, and I would encourage people to go out and get that. We need the town to have a marker on everybody's house, because it's not like 20 years ago, everybody knew everybody, and the firemen were all residents in town, now it's all changed, and we really need to do that. And it's $20, and they will install it, so it's a great deal.
They put it right on your mailbox or wherever, it's clear for them.
Good.
We, you want to mention that, you're closing the cleanup? Nick said you were doing that.
Yes, yeah, I will put it down here.
Also, like, did we ever get an update on legal service costs? I know we got it at one time. Has that been brought up to date by KP?
You mean what we owe them, or what we...
What we pay to them.
I don't know if I have a recent update, and they tend to back invoice on that a lot, so what happens is you get punched at the end of the year. It's a lawyer thing, they invented procrastination, so they tend to wait until, I mean, they're all the same, they just wait until the last minute, but I can ask...
If you would, yeah.
Barbara, where we stand, where the last billing is, and if you, if you want, just to give them a reminder, you can have Bree or myself just send them, you know, a letter that says, "Would you please bring billing up to date, because we're, you know, we need to know where we're going to be at the end of the year when we have to close all of this out."
Okay.
Although you'll have to, under the law, you have until sometime in July to do it.
Fifteenth, I believe.
Yeah, before it becomes a bill of a prior year, but still, it's, you want me to...
Unless they're really behind, you know, unless they're holding billing, the one that we signed today had...
I'm just interested in, they gave us a breakdown of where the money was spent. They had a nice little...
Oh, is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay. So he's looking for the breakdown for, like, cases, based on cases?
Yeah, I mean, they do it on each bill, it tells what the billing is for.
Right, but I'm just kind of seeing...
An annual over...
Yeah, I think we should, month to month, well, maybe quarter to quarter, just update it.
Get an update, yeah. So that would probably be with their billing department, yeah.
The billing department, yeah. But what about, too, getting what you had mentioned, I mean, I'd love to see where everybody is coming in this home stretch, where they are with budgets, you know, making sure that everybody is, nobody's going to overspend their budget.
Well, we should ask Barbara that.
Yeah, can we get a copy of the budgets?
Yeah, Barbara, she stays pretty much on top of that, and I don't know, there were a few, there were a few alternates that I think they had to do some juggling around, but nothing major at this point.
Good.
No major shortages.
And actually, Bree and Barbara found some money for the Board of Selectmen recently, some of the things that we paid for, she's about to highway or...
Bree's now getting accustomed to what account things go into, where she's not sure, and it, not her fault, it's, it's kind of confusing the way it sets up, I mean, you've got a new townhouse account, then you've got a building and grounds account, and you can, you know, you can, something will fit either way, but there's far less money in the new townhouse account for that sort of thing than there is in the building and grounds account, and a couple of big things got put in there, which got transferred back out.
It's just coding the correct...
It was in the negative, but I just, but there was a few things this year, getting the new door locks, the back door for the police station, that was...
And getting all of those buttons.
Then that was another one that we did.
That was an expense.
That got done this year, it was just a little, it was probably about a little over $2,000, maybe come up every two or three years, three years.
Yeah, we had a leak down, well, it was a flood, not a leak, it was a flood, the water came in down there, we had to house some repairs, you know, and those sorts of things, that's why the building and grounds account is there, but, you know, sometimes you don't think to put it in, and it gets put in the other way. But if you're ever looking for someone to put key man insurance on, it would be your town accountant, because she's extremely valuable in that department, as far as where things go and how you stuff around, that's probably one of the most key positions in any town of this size, is, is the person who juggles the money and puts it in the right , you know, puts it in the right box.
I agree.
We've got a chain to her desk, so.
I call it mama.
Okay, John?
Okay, correspondence, this is from the Board of Selectmen, Cava, Mass. On April 24th, the Board of Selectmen reorganized with the following results. Alan Dunham is chairman, Ronald Clark is vice chairman, Sarah Hewens member, Helen Maroney member, and David Robinson member. Which brings up something I probably should have when we were talking about the Collins. The Collins gave us a list of people, towns that they had done work for, so I sent a note to Cava, because they said, it was Cava, I sent it to Alan, he said it predated his time, so he really couldn't. So I think I'll send off to some other towns, just see, you know, what they say. Did it work well? Were they impressed?
Well, Collins should provide you with that information if you ask them.
The references.
Who they recruited for, period, yeah.
Yeah, we've got the list.
Okay.
I just want to send a note out and say, you know, were you satisfied with the work there? We talked about the dog issue, so we'll take that up next week. We talked a little bit about the Plymouth Historical Society, that Chris Moreno, who's the signer for the funds that were left by Mrs. Dennett to the Plymouth, Plimpton Historical Society, she suggested that Jessica Kinsman, who is president, and myself have signing authority, and then we've agreed and voted, once they have a board of directors, that it will turn it over to the board of directors.
Okay. Yeah, that's for me.
Let's see, we're invited to an Old Colony Planning Council annual meeting, May 18th. You going?
Not if we have second night of town meeting. None of us will be going.
That's right, okay. Gee, it's going to be at the Hotel 1620.
Yeah, it should be a nice time, they do a good job.
Do you want me, will you hold up on that, or will you let me?
I've got it, I'm, my refrigerator at home, it has to be in by May 11th, I think, so I, I will send it in, but I just don't know if we're going to make it in one night.
This is the, this is a letter from Old Colony Planning Council to Secretary Matthew Beaton, Executive Officer, Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and this is about the South Coast Rail Project, are you familiar with this? Just asking that phase implementation be done by the MBTA to serve the region sooner, while continuing to work with the agencies and public to design and build the full service. I don't know if we'll ever see that in my life.
I don't know, there were a couple of, we had some battles at our meetings, the different groups that really wanted the project in their area to be the front runner, and they ended up going with this one.
The South Bridge?
The South Bridge, yeah.
That's interesting, because, another letter from the Old Colony Planning Council to Secretary Beaton, this one is relative to Union Point, used to be, I believe, Southfield up in Waymouth, is noted that the proponent filed a notice of project change as a result of a year-long reimaging and refining process with input that was provided by the host communities, local authorities, and interested stakeholders, and it goes on to talk about transit, that the proponent should work with the Boston, Brockton area transit and the MBTA and private carriers to investigate the feasibility of regional connectivity with existing transit systems, and to ensure that future transit demands are analyzed, met, and funded. Lot of changes going on there, I know my daughter was looking at one time moving in there, and since then, you know, it's really, they've dropped a lot of the business side, but they seem to be expanding a number of the residential side. Old Colony Joint Transportation Committee, Thursday, May 4th, this is the agenda for it.
I don't have a record on that. No, Eldon, I can't remember Eldon's last name, from East Bridgewater or West Bridgewater, represents Old Colony Planning Council on that committee.
Okay. We're not even listed on the list of towns that are there, so. Notice we still get charged our MBTA fee. The Plimpton Halifax Express, this is Friday, April 21st, no candidate for Plimpton Selectmen. Finance Committee and Planning Boards all select candidates. So there's a rumor we may have a candidate in the...
Great news.
Looks like it was, we didn't have a town meeting, I mean, a selectmen's meeting, I think, this time.
Yeah, we met last week, didn't we?
The 21st was for...
Yeah, it was the week before we did it, because it was...
Yeah, right, so this is written for the 17th.
Okay.
So there is, that's the extent of that, yes. Plimpton Halifax Express, Friday, April 28th, Selectmen and FinCom meet with Collin Center about town administrative position, and quite a good article on what went on. If you're interested, it's also on TV and being streamed. Also, a review of the town meeting warrant articles, and Board of Selectmen Chair Colleen Thompson made a request to improve the identification of Area 58 broadcasts.
And Bree spoke with them, and apparently they were surprised that the old meetings were running.
He said all the old meetings, that was from a lot of time ago, and I said, "Well, it wasn't dated, there was no description, so can you do what you do for the other, just what you do for the school committee meetings?" And he said, "We do them for all of them." And that was, I was speaking to Dylan Gula, and he said, "From now on, we'll mark them."
Good.
Good.
That was, let's go forward.
Planning Board, two notices of public hearings, one is political signs, which we've decided to take out as an article, so that's no longer relevant, and the other one is to Article 30 on the town warrants, Section 8, Special District Floodplain and Watershed Protection So both of those were posted.
What about the marijuana?
There is a third one?
Marijuana's a general bylaw.
You're right, Article 32.
I thought they had to hold a hearing because we were going to do a moratorium?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a bylaw thing.
It doesn't fall under a zoning article, does it? I think it falls under a zoning article, it's just a general bylaw.
No, it says to see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaw by adding a new Section 98, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments.
Just as a piece of information, and I found out over the last few days, almost every town in Plymouth County has a moratorium on, they're all coming in now, interesting, we have one, we have one, maybe they had it already, which they're all getting voted in, or they're about to have it for their town.
It makes sense, until the state clarifies something.
Exactly.
They've got some work to do.
They sure do. So that's all the...
If you read into that, it's amazing how hurky-jerky the whole process is, they just don't know how to deal with it.
They don't know what to do.
And then the idea of, the idea of putting, you know, putting the stop on the retail sales, putting that out a year, but the rest of the law goes into effect, there isn't going to be, you know, four families in the state of Massachusetts that don't have a marijuana garden in their yard this coming year, I mean, it is phenomenal, read, read up, there's a few good articles on it, and so, again, it's, well, when the state tries to legalize something or make it illegal, they generally create a mess. I mean, marijuana's been around for 50 years, and it was never a problem until the state decided to get involved.
I was wondering, yeah, how it's going to affect the medical marijuana, if it has kind of thrown them for a loop as well.
Well, I, they're sort of at the tip of the spear on this, because they've been established for several years, they're already, they're already, you know, in the process, so, but that's the thing, I mean, you can buy it legally if you have a prescription for marijuana and for medical parts of it, but you can't buy it for recreational purposes, so it just, they should have just allowed it to go, you know, but I mean, Colorado did the same thing when they passed the law, their first go-around of the law allowed state taxing, local, like city taxing and everything else, and they taxed it so high that it was, if you wanted to buy marijuana, it was still cheaper to go see the local high school senior and, and, you know, and so they, now they've pulled back on that, and it's, you know, it's reasonably priced, but I guess those are the things you learn when you, when you jump into do this sort of stuff.
Well, I just wonder if they'll, I saw something, I don't know if it was, I don't actually even know what show I saw, but it was, might even been an article in a magazine about open air...
Growing.
Growing cultivation, and how that is actually the, probably the best scenario.
It was probably that Globe article.
Yeah, okay, that's what it was, the Globe article, and...
And I think what you're going to see now is all the lobbyists for the different groups coming in, the agricultural lobbies will be in there saying, you know, growing it in confined environments is not the way to go, which will, they've already voted that it can't be agricultural, now they'll have to figure out, are they going to reverse that? And it'll be interesting to see how it plays out.
Yeah, it will be interesting to see, and, you know, maybe for energy consumption purposes, that would be the best, is to have it grown outside, but if you want it in the winter, you'd probably still have people that grow it inside, I don't know how long it takes, or I don't know anything about it.
Unless you've got a really bad habit, I mean, you know, you can, it allows six plants per, or two, or 12, if there are two people in the house, that's a lot of weed for, even for two people in the course of one year, so. One other thing that's going to come out of this, since it was maybe illegal 80 years ago, back in the 30s, when everybody was doing, you know, killer weed and all that, all those movies were out, was it'd be, the actual fiber, the actual hemp fibers are a hugely versatile plant and inexpensive plant, and of course, the law made it illegal to grow that, so you're going to see a lot of changes industrially, I mean, in terms of growing that and making building products from, from the fibers, and paper from the fibers, and so on and so forth, that's, that's all going to, it's going to add a whole new agricultural bent that way, which, which is, which is good, I mean, that's a slightly different, there's different kinds of plant, those plants tend to be, you know, 15 feet tall, and they're very thin, and I guess the quality of the, you know, not really like quality you can use for medicine or for recreation so much, but they're really good for fiber.
Well, we shall see how it plays out.
More to come.
Yep, that's for sure.
So the last thing here is about the Plymouth County government, basically. So, the last thing here is, um, about the Plymouth County government, basically, and their budget, um, we got some emails from a Plymouth selectman, and I had, uh, one of the commissioners talk to me, basically, the gist of it is that Plymouth, the town, used some county land, I think for a dump, and either has given it back to the county or vacated it or something, and they left it in horrible condition and refused to participate in cleanup, um, now they're in litigation. The budget has come up for Plymouth County, and the town of Plymouth is count, is calling all of the towns, saying, vote against this, and, um, basically, there's some ruh-rah going on, we have Plymouth County coming in next week to talk to us about the budget.
Okay.
Um, do you want to talk to the selectmen from Plymouth?
Sure, I can talk to him.
Which selectman is it?
Uh, well, Smolka, he, yes.
Oh, you, you texted, because you actually...
Mahoney.
So, do they want us to vote down the Plymouth County budget because a budget line has to do with the cleanup of this site?
That, I don't know, that's, so, I assume that either he'll talk about that, or, this is, yeah, I, I will make sure you, you get the emails, this is something that I put together.
Should the whole thing be upheld if there's pending litigation, at least that line item for the, for the cleanup line?
I don't know, so that's what the commissioners will tell us next Monday.
Well, you wouldn't think that we would all be responsible for the cleanup, it should just be Plymouth, if Plymouth used the land.
Right, so what it is, is that the, the Plymouth selectmen are contacting the towns and telling the towns to direct their representative to vote a certain way, and, um, I think that's...
I will not be told what to do.
Exactly.
Probably, they have to cap it or something, it's probably a huge bill.
It probably is.
They use it as a dump, I mean, landfills to cap those is phenomenally expensive, because there's a lot of federal regulations that go with that, and state regulations, so it's good, I'll be, I can easily see why they're fighting that, that's a big bill.
So, do you want to, do you want me to tell Mahoney that he can contact you this week, or do you want to do it after, after we hear from the commissioners, or?
Actually, why don't, um, why don't we wait until we hear from Frank next week, he'll be here at six, I'm not sure if he's got other commissioners coming with him or not, and, um, tell him, I'll give him a call on Tuesday.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
All right, other than that, dates to remember, we have a board of selectmen's meeting next week, eight, and then I assume we're not meeting on Monday of town meeting week.
I don't think there's really a need at this point.
Okay.
And we're scheduled to meet early on Wednesday, right? So, if there's any business, we can take care of it then.
Yep, um, Public Safety Building Committee presentation, this library, I mean, this, excuse me, this Saturday at the library, at 10:30, the townwide cleanup is this Saturday at the town green.
Yeah, it's too bad there's the correspondent, because...
Yeah, uh, the cleanup is what, ten to two?
Nine to one.
Nine to one, totally wrong, all right. Uh, town meeting is the 17th, and town elections are the 20th, that's all we have, excellent. So, motion to adjourn.
I did want it to last day to register to vote for...
What?
She gave to me a...
Yeah, it already went by, it was, wasn't it, April 27th?
Last day to register to vote for special town meeting, Friday, May 5th.
Oh, Friday, May 5th, okay.
Okay, why don't you say it again?
Last day to register to vote for special town meeting, Friday, May 5th, nine to eight. The last day to publish the warrant for the special town meeting is this Wednesday.
Yeah, it's already gone in front of her, she's already signed it, so we're good.
Perfect.
All right, we have the motion to adjourn, and we have a second on favor.
Aye.
Good night, thank you for joining us.
Good night.
Night.
Under an hour?